I call to order the Westlake City Schools Board of Education work session for Monday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, roll call.
Craft.
Here.
Purnat.
Here.
Fanukin.
Here.
Lozinski.
Here.
Stole.
Here.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some moves.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Zinsky.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Purnat.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're going to begin with presentations. The Westlake Educational Foundation is a five oh one C three charitable organization that exists to extend enhanced opportunities and experiences to Westlake City School students beyond the excellent education offered through the district's traditionally funded programs. Originally founded in nineteen eighty-seven, the foundation offers grant funding to teachers and administrators for innovative and creative endeavors in pursuit of educating for excellence. Its mission. The mission of the Westlake Educational Foundation is to enhance educational opportunities and experiences of Westlake City School students in the endeavor to educate for excellence. And tonight we have foundation president Mary Essig, who is going to give us an update on the foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Per the, as Joe mentioned, the foundation was reinstated a couple of years ago and per our articles of incorporation, the foundation is required to have an annual meeting with the members of the foundation. And again, per the articles, the Westlake Board of Education are the, considered the members of the foundation. So in lieu of scheduling a separate annual meeting, we decided it would make sense to come and present to you one of your board meetings. Joe already mentioned what our mission is, to enhance the educational opportunities and experiences of Westlake City Schools students in the endeavor to educate for excellence. Again, per the articles, we have seven board members. Scott Goggan is our chairperson. I am the president. Anne Byer is secretary. Paul Nebraska is the treasurer. Paul Wilson, Joe Craft, and Craig Catanzerite are at-large members, and then Todd Hopkins is an ad hoc member, very welcome all the time, sage advice. Since the, since we've been reinstated, we basically started with no, no funds, no budget. So our first order of business really was how can we raise money to fulfill our mission? And fortunately, Scott Goggan came to us and said that Serpentine Chevrolet of Westlake wanted to donate a car. And he graciously said, let's have the foundation use it to raffle it off and raise money. So we have done that now for two years, and in doing that, we partnered with four organizations within the school district that support the Westlake City School District, PTA, Music Boosters, Athletic Boosters, and the Alumni Association. And the main reason we partnered with them is because they have, I'll call it a fan base, they have ready access to a constituency that we do not. And so we partnered with them for their marketing publicity, their connections, and they shared in the proceeds of any ticket sales that they made. So considering it was our first two years doing this, our gross sales for the first year were thirty-one thousand dollars for the first raffle and over twenty-six thousand for two thousand and twenty-two. So it gave us a start and the, with that, we decided we would go ahead and do our first round of staff grants. And so about a year ago, we kicked that off. Because we are an unknown entity still within the school system, we didn't have as many applications as we would have liked. I think people or the staff were still dealing with COVID quite a bit and had other things they were dealing with. But we did find a grant application in there that we felt very comfortable in awarding, and it was the Kiva blocks that are at the Westlake Elementary School. It was a group of three teachers. So we did that grant. It was over a couple thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact number. So they have been using them all year, and we, as a foundation, a few of us are going to be visiting the elementary school sometime this month to actually see the blocks in action within the school and see how that's been going. But from what we have heard anecdotally from the teachers, it's been a success. One of the things that caught our attention in their reason for doing it is they saw with the change in classroom instruction during COVID, when kids came back into the classroom, they had lost what they called, or they didn't really have a strong growth mindset in attacking different challenges within the classroom. And so they thought that these Kiva blocks would help encourage the students to change their mindset, to try new things, to not get discouraged immediately or give up or think that they failed if they didn't get it right the first time. So we're anxious to see how that's been working in the classroom. We did a second round of grants in the fall, or I said we offered, but we really didn't have any applications that we felt we could fund. And we are going to be kicking off our third round of grants here in the next few weeks. So we're hoping that giving them a little more time before we have to decide or before they have to complete the applications will get some more applications this time. The other thing that we're trying to do is, while the car raffles have been wonderful, they're not really generating the funds that we would like to have to get the foundation really moving along. So at our recent meetings, we've, we've talked about considering a capital campaign for the next academic year, something that we will discuss further at our next meeting in a few weeks and make some decisions on that. We're also identifying local corporations and businesses to contact for donations and potentially corporate sponsorship. So those two things would go hand in hand. So we're working on that. Our final next step, the other thing that we really want to talk about is how can we recruit more? And I'm going to use the term members, even though you are technically the members of the foundation. We have seven directors, but our articles incorporation allow us to have additional committees or advisory groups or people. And we've discussed having more people in our conversations because some of the initiatives we have talked about undertaking, it's overwhelming for just the seven of us to do everything, you know, doing the raffle. When it's raffle time, that's pretty much all we do. So that's what we would like to do is how can we recruit more people to at least become advisory, in an advisory role, and maybe take a more active role moving forward with the foundation? Do you have any questions?
Are the grants specific to only teachers or can students in or clubs, groups also apply for them?
That's a good question. We decided initially that our grants would just be for certified staff. And there are very specific criteria within our application. They must, they won't support any extracurricular or, I guess, extracurricular activities. They wouldn't support clubs. It's really just for enhancing classroom learning. And we're really putting heavy emphasis on creative and innovative ways of enhancing that education. Certainly, we will not be funding anything that should be funded by the school district. So that's really what we're looking at. That's not to say it wouldn't be something that might change in the future, but right now.
Yeah, the only thing that came to mind for me was science.
Yes, and that's a great question. We've, in our research, we saw that other, other districts, they'll do it for students, they'll do it for people in the community. But we have such limited funds right now. We had to start small and.
Baby steps.
Hopefully, we can get to the point where we can start offering those other grant opportunities. Yeah.
Other questions for Mary?
If they're specific beyond just for the capital campaign and corporate sponsorships, whatnot, if there's specific initiatives, you're trying to look for people, I think that would help for looking for that guidance would help for suggesting additional people to help.
Yes, and that's what we discussed at our last meeting is what are those things for which we need people or at least need their input? And so Anne Byer has graciously offered to put together a list of those things because thinking of PTA, we would, you know, we may potentially have standing committees at some point handling different initiatives. One initiative that we had kicked around was having a race opportunity, like a five K in the fall, which we could do, but again, it's a daunting task for the seven of us because if we decide to do the race, that's all we're going to be focusing on. And there's other things that we think we need to be doing at the same time. So if we can get more people to assist us with some of those initiatives, that would be helpful.
Other questions? Super. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to presentation two B, and Mr. Paul Wilson is going to give us an ESSER funding review.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. This has come up at the last few meetings, so we definitely wanted to do a presentation to kind of show you where we are with our ESSER spending. So Mr. Hopkins is going to help me this evening. If you want to go ahead and jump to that first slide. Okay, so what is ESSER? ESSER obviously is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And I put in there the calculation just so you could understand, you know, I'm sure you've heard different schools get different funding and how would that, how did we only get this amount and another school got this, the other, this other amount? So it comes down to Title I funds. How much are we awarded based on our Title I funds? So overall, what I wanted to do is provide a breakdown of the different, the different ESSER funds that we've received. So you can see our total was five point three eight million and how that was broken down, and I'll get into the individual details as I go through this. The CRF, the coronavirus relief fund was a hundred seventy-one thousand, ESSER one was three hundred twenty-seven thousand, ESSER two was one point four eight million, and ARP ESSER, it was three point four million. So that's our total five point three eight. So what are we doing with all of these funds? So as we look at that, we had to set some goals and parameters. What were our goals with ESSER spending? We've heard some people saying, okay, we're going to go do buildings, we're going to go do this, we're going to get some different things for athletics. What we wanted to do was focus on these things. So you can see on there, we wanted to close learning gaps, which is the goal behind ESSER funding. Close learning gaps created during COVID nineteen pandemic. And we've seen that. We've seen them significantly actually in the district. So that was our number one goal. We wanted to talk about the mental health needs of our students. We wanted to improve access to technology in K twelve, which Dr. Zagre has done an excellent job with his planning, working through that, and we wanted to address safety. So let's break down these funds individually. So our CRF expenditures, and if, I put a timeframe up there so you could see kind of where we were when all these things came out. So this was March twenty twenty and it, through December twenty twenty-one. But when you think about this, the CRF was part of the CARES Act. So the money was sent to the state and divided it up by district in March twenty twenty. That's when everything was kind of happening. That's when we were canceling school, moving along. So what were we trying to do? We were buying PPE, cleaning supplies, disinfectants. Those of you who have been athletic adventure, we put the backpacks bears on there. Different signage so that we could start school successfully. When we came back, all these things were important to us. We had to have the face masks, if you recall Plexiglas. I'm sure Mr. Kosovar probably still has some of those around. The divider so that we could do things, gloves for our, gloves for our cleaners, gloves for anybody who needed them really. So you can see in there, that's what we were doing with that. So ESSER one expenditures. So once again, this came out in March of twenty twenty. What the district decided to do with ESSER one was to plant the general front salary for elementary specialist teachers in lieu of a RIF. So what we did was we looked at that and we looked, we looked at the opportunities there, and we thought that that was the best thing to do when talking about ESSER one expenditures. So really, ESSER two, if you look at that, that was in December of twenty twenty when that, when that actually started. That's when you start to see different things come out. And with this one, this one is more money. This is one point four, I believe, roughly, is what I had on there. This is when you start to see things like our technology, Chromebooks, which we decided to go one-to-one. Admin, what Admin is, is a credit recovery for our students that fell behind. And I will tell you, at that time I was at the high school, and that, that was a big deal for us, to allow the high school students, and they struggled tremendously, to have the opportunity to have credit recovery was a great thing for them, and it's actually continuing as, as we speak now. We also use MAP as far as progress monitoring and things that we could use for that to look at gaps within even kindergarten through eighth grade. We did some different PD, and the reason we brought up PD and the reason it's on there so, so heavily is what we realized was it was different when our, I think, I think somebody had mentioned it earlier, when our students came back, it was different for our teachers. So they didn't really know how to teach after such a significant time. So we've had some different PDs. Lori Woefong has done a wonderful job with our elementary school teachers and in the five, six, we have Donna Snodgrass here working on formative assessments and trying to figure out how to close those gaps. We plan to continue that into the high school. Talking about air quality improvements here at the Hilliard Building, PPE continues at that time, obviously. We provided ESL support, crisis support, mental health, different, different mental health supports. The admin oversight position is which, is what I'm in. Talking with Rob Woods, we were very lucky that we were able to add a point five math instructor. At that point five math, we saw significant problems with math at the high school. Math is a building block type of thing. Those students that didn't build there, we saw gaps. So we actually were able to have Amy Davy come in and work with our students, the significant gaps early or throughout the year. So that made it, our early results on that had been really good. So we're happy about that. We were able to add tutoring, once again Screencastify, our summer enrichment program, which we did last year, which was, I believe we said a third of our students were in the summer enrichment program. And this year, I think we're going to probably be less than a third, but it's still pretty significant based on our numbers right now as we're still initially planning. Obviously, we have the nurse and school resource officers. So ESSER two was a big deal for us and things that we had. Go ahead, Todd. Thank you. So let's talk about ARP ESSER planning as we looked at that. So that's where we are now. That's the significant piece. I believe that was three point four million dollars. So the things that we're hoping to look at, counseling, social worker, those are two big pieces that I think ESSER explains out, the counseling in the, being able to help our students through some of these issues. So being able to add a counselor, hopefully, being able to add a social worker at that secondary level will be huge. We talked about a date, a K eight data coach to kind of help.
Where were you going to put the counselor?
The counselor will be at the elementary school. That's the proposal. Yeah, sorry. And the social worker, I think I said seven through twelve. And there's already a, there's already a K six social worker, so that's why we've elected for seven through twelve. K data coach, that's going to help us really identify with all of the tools we have for gap closing and looking at where the gaps are. Talking about, we're proposing a data coach perhaps. We're not sure on that yet, but we're proposing that to kind of help us identify gaps, work with teachers, work with teams, and go from there. Credit recovery position is based out of the high school. I can tell you that there are about two hundred and twenty-five classes worth of students right now who are doing credit recovery. And that's important because at the high school level, you just don't move on. You need X amount. And here you need twenty-three credits to graduate. When students get behind, this serves a bigger role. This credit recovery position will help organize that, make sure these students are working towards their goal, working with the counselors, being accountable to Rob and his team as well.
So do they retake the class or is it just tutoring and?
No.
Doing makeup work?
What this is, credit recovery is if you take the class and you fail the class. So you still need some of the prerequisites or you still need X amount of, you know, if you, you know, you need four English credits. If you fail an English class, you have to make up that English class. We see a lot with our math, the algebra is the algebra, geometry is algebra twos. So really, we're helping students so that we don't have to have constant repeating of those, of those classes in the main part of the school. We can do that after with the credit recovery. That answer your question?
Sort of, yeah. So, so they're doing it after, after their other classes, then it's like an after-school program?
No, it's actually during the school day. Rob and his team has done an excellent job. They built it, if they built a schedule, it or build it into the schedule. So there's assigned periods. So instead of having a study hall, say you have a study hall assigned, but you failed the class, you will be assigned to the credit recovery room to go do work on your class during that assigned study hall.
Out of curiosity, so would they, would the credit recovery start then in the next school year or would it be, so if you failed first semester, they would start working with you there?
We, you can start, you can start immediately. That's the nice part about the system. This system, I work with Joy Morgan, who's one of the assistant principals. She works with the counseling team. We have a document where they have a meeting, they talk to Joy, Joy calls me, we register the students and they can move right along. It's been, like I said, it's been, it's been really helpful for us thus far. So enjoy that, rather than have to worry about summer school and different things like that.
Do you see it, the situation getting, getting better? Or is it too soon to tell you?
Um, we've seen, we've seen a good amount of success with it this year. You know, it was, it was difficult last year. A lot of students just said, I, I don't do well with this type of learning. You know, I think parents had a hard time. So we've seen some success for sure. You know, we have some students who see this as a, like, it's almost giving them hope, like, okay, I can get back to graduation. We have a young lady at the high school who's probably taken four classes this year, maybe five, who's going to graduate on time. So that's a great story, you know what I mean? Rather than saying, wow, it looks like you're going to put in another year, you can go ahead and do that. So, yeah, it's been, it's been useful so far for sure. Okay. So we also are happy that we're planning for ten campus-wide tutors before and after school, working, working with Link as well to be able to provide those. Talk to Mike Waters. Amanda's been very great with that. She talked to Mike Waters about the different programs at the younger levels as well. So continuing our one-to-one computer initiative, continuing with our school nurse, our gifted instructor at West as well. And then, like I said, continuing with MAP and Metam, Acadiance is a new program too for progress monitoring that we're looking at. And then additionally, our school resource officers. So continuing with that, those are all the things we're hoping to look at. Go ahead.
Before you move on, you're talking about the data coach. There was actually an OSBA session that I went to on this with Forecast Five.
Okay.
I don't know if you're familiar. I don't know if you have a data coach in mind or whatnot. I can get that information for you. And it's a company that comes in and has data. Their primary background, I believe, was treasure, but they've moved now more towards gap closing. So it's not necessarily saying like that they focus on gap closing. So. I just saw the look you gave me.
Thank you. We definitely use. So one thing that we heard at the last board meeting, I believe it was, or two board meetings ago, what are the one-time expenditures versus what may continue moving forward? So one-time expenditures, what we wanted to do was outline that. So cleaning supplies have kind of leveled out to normal levels after talking with Mr. Kosovar. So the point five teacher at the high school, we're able to absorb that position and not have to worry about that moving forward with, with how the schedule is there. So we're happy about that. The PD, like I said, has been pretty significant. We haven't spent, or we won't spend the amount that we normally, that we have the last few years moving forward, but it has been super helpful for our teachers. And I know Amanda spoke about that at our last board meeting as well. So the teachers have benefited from that for sure. The administrative oversight position, obviously, summer enrichment program. Now we'll continue that this year, we'll continue it next year. I mean, I guess we'll see where that goes. I mean, it, it's been really well received and what we thought was kind of like we did this tier one last year. Those have really kind of taken off. Mike Waters has done a wonderful job with that as well. So we'll see where that goes. Credit recovery position, we see as something that will level off to answer your question. And then school-based tutoring and the air quality upgrades, obviously, at Hilliard. So you can go ahead, Todd. And then what do we expect to continue moving forward? So one-to-one, obviously, we will continue that. Now, I do know that that was put into the five-year forecast some time ago. So, but that's something that will continue. Really, the mental health supports we see is valuable. I think we're so lucky here. There's a lot of schools that aren't as lucky to be able to say, hey, Dr. Goggan, we, we see some students struggling. Can we get an additional counselor? We think it'll make a big difference with our students. Can we do that? Can we get a social worker? Let me explain to you why. Why is this important? And that's really the higher level counseling that could go on. And also being able to provide our parents with more community, community resources and doing different things, parent nights and things, actually, looking at that, we're, we're excited by those opportunities. So obviously, the counseling piece gaggle, which credit the Pete on this. Gaggle is something that, you know, I think we were like, okay, let's try this. And, you know, I think after about two weeks, everybody was like, wow, how do we live without this? Because it really has, it alerts us when things come up. And there, there are some alarming things that kids say that are cries for help that tie along with mental health supports and different things like that. And we've been able to, even at night, sit in meetings and be able to reach out to a parent and say, hey, you know, hey, something just came up. We want to make sure that everything's okay. And they're very appreciative. So I think gaggle is something that we should continue, and the benefit has been great. And then, you know, the final thing I put in there, we spent or budgeted in a way intended, intended to minimize long-term obligations. I think we're really proud of how we've addressed these things and what we're planning. So you know, as I look at that, do you have any questions for us? Yes, sir.
We are proud in the way that you've, I guess, attacked and some of the problems and helped students and teachers. And I don't know if it's possible to generally speak about a social worker and some of the activities without getting too personal with regard to what the social worker is doing.
So social workers have, that's kind of a new, that's a new thing in schools, if you think about it. We, we were talking about this, probably, I was sitting at a principal's conference, and you probably remember, Dr. Goggan, I, I was, it was an SWC meeting at the time. And I was talking to the other principals, and there were some other people there, and they were like, well, we're hired three social workers. And I'm like, social workers? What are we, what are we doing? So we started to research this out a little bit. And what happens is, you know, we have our counselors in our building, and our counselors in our building are responsible for, you know, and I'll speak on my level specifically, you know, scheduling, working with their students, college planning, planning the seals, keeping track of credits. But that doesn't take away all the mental health that's there. You know, we've been able to contract out with Belfair a little bit. And we work very closely with the social worker provided so that we can, or they can help us provide higher level, higher level counseling for our students. We have, you know, some really severe cases. And if they can't help with that, what they can do is provide community resources. They can reach out and provide resources for families. What we're hoping, when we're looking at this position, really, like I said, to be able to hold some parent nights, to be able to say, here's what I do. Like, some of the things that I would say is, I want this person to outline kind of what they do, send it out to the parent blasts, say, here's what I do, here's what I'm available for. And what we've been able to do, and I think it's been nice how we've done it through Belfair. We've seen kind of the benefit of, of this type of service. Our parents have been very open to. I would tell you, when I was at the high school, I had a parent actually say to me who worked with a person who was a social worker, hey, you need to tell, tell more people about this. This is an unbelievable service you have. So I think through those experiences, we thought we need to be able to have this in our, have this kind of a leadership position of our social work team to assist our counselors with everything that they have on their plate.
As I travel and I mentioned, for example, all the things that you're talking about today, especially social worker, just, just the compliments we receive on the district and that level of care and work that the district is doing is just seen as being amazing. So.
And I would say Dr. Morgan is an unbelievable advocate for those type of things for students, honestly. So I think we all see the value in it and I, you know, very, we're very fortunate to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Speaking of parent nights, Lake would just did a engaging, the well, engaging with wellness day with their PTA. And they had a number of like art there, art, yoga and more, and also mental health and wellness as part of it. If you want, I could send you that schedule.
Yeah, that'd be great. Like I said, this, this is all ESSER, well, falls under, I guess, you know, falls under my umbrella. It's really a team effort of talking to everybody, including the principals and the teachers and planning. So, you know, I'll happily take that. I think, I think where we are planning out with this ARP ESSER, there are going to be opportunities for growth with our, including the families, and hopefully, we continue to see a push forward as hopefully we head out of COVID and into regular normalcy with students. We need, trying to get them back on track.
Mr. Wilson, I have a question. ESSER three funds have to be spent by September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Yes. Have we spent all of our funds or do we still have ongoing funds for the next two school years?
Great question. So. Great question, so in our planning, as you, you can see in there, as we are, as, as we're hopeful with that, we did leave funds. As things come up, we didn't want to just say, let's spend everything right now, so we, we did leave funds. Um, in there, and I, I've worked with Roberta Rets and Todd, Todd's been great, kind of working with that as well, so there are funds available, yes.
Great, thank you.
So your wish list is great, funds will more than be evaporated and used.
Yes.
Other, other questions for Mr. Wilson?
I do think it's worth pointing out, um, especially back with the original first round of Esser's funds where we used it to supplement. The specialist teachers in lieu of a ref, I do think it's worth reminding people that we received a cut from state budgeting that year. Um, that came out of the woodwork, that surprised everybody, so I think it's worth, you know, just something to remind people of. And yes, we're still talking about five-point-three-eight million dollars, but I mean, it's a fifty-million-dollar budget for each year. So it, it is a s- significant amount of money compared to what we normally get from the federal government, but. It's still, it's not a huge sum, and we have a very specific amount of time we have to use funds.
That's a great point, and I, like I said, I, I think we're fortunate to have it, hopefully, um, we're spending it how we. Think is going to impact students the most, and I think that's the, at the end of the day, that's what it is there for.
Can I just make a comment about the team, um, with, with Pete here, I know Stephanie's not here, but. Paul, Amanda, and everyone else, and Mike Waters have to put him in there, one of the things that, um. Is nice is that they were very prescriptive in how they've utilized this funding. They didn't just take the funding and dump it into an area and say, oh, we're just gonna, you know, pay our current title teacher, you know, and, and start doling the money out. They went through and actually thought through all the different things that the kids are going to need, and. Really tried to attack it very surgically, it was, it's, I thought, a very good job of that.
I think they've done a great job in utilizing the resources that have been given to us, and it's a fantastic opportunity. And you've done a fantastic job, and I think it's great being able to report out to the community how the funds have been spent.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Wilson? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to presentation two C, permanent improvement and facilities review, and I believe Mr. Kosovar is going to. Speak on that, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate the time tonight to present this update to you all. Um, I, I want to go ahead and first go, I want to go ahead and give a little brief update about our facilities. So on the first slide, Mr. Hopkins, um, just a, a quick review. Um, we all know that we have a new elementary school, just a couple of years old. And then our middle school and high school were built in two thousand thirteen. Um, at that same time, two thousand twelve, um, we had a renovation of Dover Intermediate School. Now, we, we do have a couple of other older buildings within our, uh, portfolio in our district. Parkside, which is being turned over to the city, and, um, last discussion I had with the city engineer. They are planning to demo that building sometime in the near future, but we put down, uh, next year as, as a possibility for that to happen. Holly Lane, uh, nineteen sixty-one building, that's going to be coming down this summer. Uh, we have this building, Hilliard, um, which was built in nineteen fifty-four. Our transportation complex built in two thousand four. And then our performing arts center, which is part of our high school complex, that was built in two thousand six. Also, um, not listed on this page is our field house, that's a nineteen nineties addition to the high school when it was built. And that's sitting separate off on that campus. Um, so the reason why I went through that little bit of a, um, uh, history lesson on our facilities is. Um, I wanted to dovetail our capital improvement, um, short-term and long-term expenditures. With, with what our facility needs actually are, and to help, um, better understand what those strengths and weaknesses. In our buildings are, uh, we, um, had developed a, um, a survey. And that survey was developed by our strategic, uh, planning committee. Um, and it's to try to gather those overall impressions of our district's buildings and properties. Now, I sent this out to twenty-five, um, district administrators. And to our full, um, facility strategic planning committee. The reason why I picked that group was because, number one, they, they are in our buildings more, they see a lot of the. Um, maintenance that needs to occur, they see the different areas of the building on a daily basis. And I'm trying to gather as much feedback and information from them as possible. Um, the facility strategic planning committee also has members, um, from the community, I, I have a representative. From the W DAB, um, from Music Boosters, I have classified, um, employees within the district. I have teachers from the district, so we tried to just sort of round off the entire group to try to get a cross-section. Of, of people that are through our buildings, so I sent out a survey, I got seventeen respondents. And just kind of wanted to review that with you a little bit, so out of those, um, ninety-four percent of the people. Had rated our buildings either satisfactory or excellent. Um, it's a good score, um, as you could imagine, our newer buildings rated very high. And our buildings that have some age on them were lower, or, um, either in, in the unsatisfactory, or maybe even sometimes in a failing manner. Um, so the ones that had the unsatisfactory scores or the lower scores. Were our, um, performing arts center, our high school athletic facilities, different venues there. Um, some of our district properties, and then various areas of Dover Intermediate School. Um, one thing you're going to note when I go through some of the, um, pie charts. Are that we have a high score of unsure as a response. Um, and, and I, I picture it this way, uh, the folks that travel through our buildings, they may see the high school. Um, more than they see our transportation department, or maybe even our elementary school or Dover Intermediate School. So if they don't have a, a basis for the question, I gave unsure as a possibility of wanting the answer. So I knew that they just really didn't have, uh, a good guess as to what the, um, what their feeling was on their perception of the building. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, overall, uh, on, on this, um, chart, you will see. That, uh, the first one in the upper left-hand corner has a score of ninety-four percent, and that's either for the. Um, excellent or satisfactory marking. Um, our high school, you'll see, has a very low unsure, that's a little purple wedge, excuse me. Um, unsure, um, response, so most of the people that responded to that, they, they had a good feeling about our facilities. Um, you'll see that we have a very high excellent score, forty-seven percent, and satisfactory score of forty-one percent. Um, now look at Lee Bernison, uh, middle school, which is just a little bit to the bottom here, Tyler. Um, so Lee Bernison and Dover Intermediate Schools, they have a higher percentage of unsure as a response. So the people that responded, they didn't have a feeling one way or another about the condition of the building. And the functionality of the building, so they responded that way, now you'll see, they, they, um, the middle school does have a. High excellent score of seventeen percent, and a satisfactory percentage of almost thirty percent. Now Dover Intermediate School, which is right next to it, that has a, um. A satisfactory score of thirty-five percent, but it also has an unsatisfactory score of eleven percent. So you're going to see, as we get into the older buildings, uh, people's, uh, perception of the condition and functionality of the building. Starts to, starts to waver. On the next slide, you'll see our newest elementary school, notice the very high, um, unsure percentage. Fifty-two percent, again, it seems like some of the respondents just have not been in our building here. Um, we do have a high, uh, excellent rating of thirty-five percent and satisfactory of eleven percent. Now, the next three are, are Transportation Center, our, um, Hilliard Board of Education, and our district properties. Um, again, you'll see the very, very high, uh, unsure rate, um, and there are some, um, respondents that said. So these were unsatisfactory, but the percentage wasn't that big. On the next slide. This is where I started to break down exactly where, um, oh, I'm sorry, this is where we still see, um, a breakdown of where. We're seeing some of the unsatisfactory or failing marks, so at our high school, we have our performing arts center. Twenty-nine-point-four percent of the respondents said that it was unsatisfactory. Conversely, we also had thirty-five percent said it was excellent, so as people are seeing different parts of the building. They might be responding to, I came to a, a performance, it was very nice, things looked good. But some of them may be seeing some leaks or some other areas of the building that there's some problems. Uh, at our high school field house that's sitting out in our parking lot, um, twenty-three percent, um, unsatisfactory. And a percentage of failing, mostly because the building's, uh, underutilized, not utilized as much as it should be. And there's, there's not a lot happening in it, at our high school, our football field, track, press box, that area. Forty-one percent is either unsatisfactory or failing score for their observations of those, uh, facilities. And then our tennis court also had eleven percent as a unsatisfactory score. On our next slide, our baseball field and softball fields, so our baseball field first. Um, again, so you'll see, there's a little bit less people that are, are traveling to these two venues. So the unsure amount is a little bit higher, fifty-two percent, um, but we had a eleven percent, um, of a failing score. Um, at our baseball field, and then a twenty-three-point-six percent failing or, or unsatisfactory at our softball field. It, I guess it might depend on the day and what their circumstances that they're there, yes. Our next slide, then Dover Intermediate School. Um, again, Dover Intermediate School saw renovations in two thousand twelve, but it didn't touch every part of the building. Here, the respondent said that the overall condition of the music and art rooms were twenty-nine percent unsatisfactory. Um, over at our classrooms in Dover Intermediate School, eleven percent said it was unsatisfactory. And then finally, um, Lee Bernison Middle School Reed Field, the soccer field, had eleven percent score of unsatisfactory. So out of all the, um, questions that we sent out about how they felt about the conditions of the different venues, different areas of our building. The, the highlighted areas for the Performing Arts Center, um, our athletic venues. And various areas of Dover Intermediate School were the ones that sort of, uh, popped out for us. On our next slide, um, one of the last questions that I asked the group was, um, to give us a, a top list of. Of areas that we should focus on, um, Dover Intermediate School facilities. Um, the things that were mentioned were temperature control and it's, and consistent temperature management. Um, flooring, music room renovations, art room renovations, some roof leaks, and a gym curtain, uh, popped up. For the PAC, upgrades to the sound system, rigging system, more storage and interior, um, upgrades. Security systems, uh, again, at Dover Intermediate School, um, paging light system indicators, these would go like in our. Gymnasiums and cafeterias and classroom safety glass were mentioned, parking lots, um, refurbished around the district. Um, high school, um, athletic venues, I think I had mentioned, and then, um, uh, further down on the list were some roofing. And, uh, general, uh, lighting upgrade and fee and vehicle replacement. So, so why is this, why does this help me, why does this help our department? This additional feedback, um, allows us to focus our permanent improvement expenditure plan, um, on the areas of greatest concern. Um, instead of just, uh, getting the money and trying to see what pops up first as a emergency. We want to be more predictive and, and, and try to focus on what's coming up. So this short-term list was put together, um, in, in, as a response to not only this feedback, but to the things that I've seen. If you'll notice, these nine short-term, you know, twelve-to-eighteen-month, um, expenditures. Um, Dover Intermediate School, or the Dover Campus is listed six, uh, six times. Transportation fleet, um, bus cameras is a security issue, um, we also have. Um, parking over here at our bill, uh, Hilliard Building, um, the, the lots in, in great disrepair and needs to be replaced. About one of the, uh, other things that really hasn't hit the list that was mentioned before is a, a larger mower, um, for, uh, more efficient. Um, care of our district properties, um, those I, I look at as a, um, opportunity, uh, type. Um, purchases, uh, again, as, as we either get good pricing. Um, if we have a project that we could tack on some additional things and, and try to knock off some vehicle replacement, we, we try to do it with that. On the next slide, this is, uh, just a, um, reminder of our primitive, permanent improvement current funding commitments. And again, you'll see in two thousand twenty-three, um, our bus lease and manuscript notes are listed. Um, but then in two thousand twenty-four, the bus lease, uh, comes off at that time, so another one hundred and forty-three, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Will be available, um, for projects. The following slide, um, is a permanent improvement plan predictive expenditures. These next two slides I had reviewed with the board earlier in fall, um, not much has changed, just a reminder. Um, we have, um, future set-asides for large capital improvement, um, fund on each of these years. Um, bus replacements and some of the, um, larger asphalt, uh, parking lots, ceiling. Uh, type projects that will be more of a preventive maintenance, so we don't, um, run into these larger expenditures. And then finally, on the, uh, last page, this is the, uh, then the long-term permanent improvement plan. Um, expenditure list, if you'll notice in, in two thousand twenty-two, I know that it's, it's a little small there. Um, but I, I have those things that, that were listed, um, in part on the short-term plan, Holly Lane's demolition. Um, security cameras for Dover Campus, Dover Intermediate School, the campus upgrades at Dover Intermediate. Um, Hilliard Parking Lot, um, uh, resurfacing, um, and then, um, I also then in two thousand twenty-three. Twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, I start to focus on those things that, um. That our survey were, were guiding us towards, um, PAC lighting upgrades, um, some more, um, furniture upgrades. Over at Dover Intermediate School, softball field work, baseball field work. Um, uh, so you'll, you'll see, you'll see in each of the years, what I did was, I tried to. Um, I tried to level out the spending across these next four or five years, so one year wasn't overwhelmed with the other. Um, that, that, um, opportunity, um, type project, um, they're hard to, they're hard to plan. Uh, sometimes if we're working on a, a, a parking lot, and a sidewalk may need to be replaced. If the crew's there, they could do it at a, uh, more costly, um, uh, price figure. We may, uh, add it on to that and then take it off a, a year that might be coming up later in, in the project. Um, those, that is a quick, uh, update of our, um, capital improvement, um, expenditure plan. And facility review, I, I'd be happy to, um, answer any questions that you might have, or try to describe it a little bit more for you if I need to.
I think it was last year I was getting, um, uh, I got complaints about the lighting and the buzzing over at Reed Field. And I, I apologize, I never did follow up, up on that, what, whatever happened with that. What, whatever happened with that?
That was repaired, it was bad ballast on the light standards, so we called Musco Lighting in. They came and they swapped out and, and upgraded actually. All the lights and the ballast on the home side of the field, that's where the buzzing was occurring. We know that probably in a year or two, we'll probably have to do the visitor side also. But there's no, there's no, there's no people and no bleachers on that side, so it was less of a concern than it was.
So there's no, the buzzing was.
So the buzzing has stopped.
And are they the LED?
They're not.
They're not, okay. Second question. And it's probably a really stupid question, but when you talked about the big mower and I know it was quite costly. Would we be better to outsource that or?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I look every, every couple of years I look at. Some services to see if we could maybe do it differently, do it more cost effectively. I have reached out to some local landscapers to get pricing. And so far, our internal staff with the equipment that we have and the timing that we could do it. Is, is just as cost effective as getting an outside group. At times, we lose our ability to stay timely with the mowing or mulching. Because other work takes them in different directions, whether it be. Mechanical work inside the buildings. But as long as we have the right equipment. We have enough staff that do both maintenance and grounds work in the district, then they should be able to take care of that at, at a cost effective measure.
What, what areas of the, the district would the wide area mower be used for?
We use it for areas that, that are outside the perimeter of the buildings. We have a fire loop that goes around each of our properties, so it's the driveway that the, that the trucks would go around. So our custodial staff take care of that area with a riding mower, smaller riding mower. The bigger fields will either be this large area mower or our zero turn mowers, we have some smaller ones. We also use it for like our larger fields back over here on at Hilliard. Over at Holly Lane, all those fields there.
Basset.
Basset.
Basset, correct. Yeah, so most of our, most of our properties are around twelve to fifteen acres. The eleven foot wide area mower would be used on primarily most of those. With the trim work being done by our custodial staff with smaller mowers on, on the inside loops.
What about Dover where Dover School was?
That would be one of the areas, correct.
And then even elementary.
And, and, and as well as the practice football field, baseball field in the back.
Over on LBMS.
Correct.
Is that one of the, the field that where it slopes down? We've discussed it years ago and the danger of it.
Oh, the one in the back of Lee Bernison?
Yeah, the one.
Softball field?
Is that? I've seen the football players. Yeah, so that is being utilized then?
It, it is, that's, that's utilized for practice. And, and you're right, you cannot fit a full football field with, without it starting to come down on, on the edges on the slopes.
And there's no way to correct that?
There's no room?
No room.
You got the road and then you got the water retention.
There's a lovely family of geese this morning. Just what we want.
Mr. Kosovari, when you were sharing your survey, I was thinking about some of those uncertain or unsure. And I, I think about, would it be helpful? To employ say a small army of folks to assist you maybe in giving tours of some of those places? And I know the board would be interested in that and potentially we would have a. I guess a canned tour in place that each of us can use and is that something you would ever consider?
I, I, I would, I would welcome that. I, I struggle at times to think how to. How to get areas of our district seen by our community members. And at times, especially with the question when we ask about, you know, what do you think of the functionality of our building or areas of the building? People may see our cafeterias, they come into our gymnasiums and, and see some of the higher public areas of it. But they might not get into the classrooms, they might not get into the art rooms and things like that. So one of the reasons why I picked the group I did because I knew at least these people did in their travels get into those areas.
Sure, absolutely. And is everyone on the board comfortable with the fact that we are setting dollars aside for those big future expenses?
What, what, I mean, what, what dollar amount?
Mr. Christopher, when we talked at our, our finance committee meeting went over this. We looked at a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars per year, I believe it was. So it'd be starting with this fiscal year. And then as we go into July, that would be the new fiscal year. So over the next few months, we would be setting aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then each fiscal year going forward, we'd be setting aside a hundred and twenty five thousand out of that one point one nine.
And that's kind of a rainy day.
It, it is.
Type of use.
Yeah, so, so what I did was I tried to see what our larger expenses would be, say ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. As we look at a roof replacement, a, a large piece of a cooling equipment. You know, those could be six hundred thousand to, you know, a million, million and a half dollars. The more we, the more we save right now, a little bit at a time, the better will be when we get down the road there.
I think it's important that we're setting aside some funds, so when we have to put a new roof on the high school or. Large cooling system, because I know this was a criticism. In the past where the district spent money on facilities, but then never maintained it afterwards. And so that's something that I know the community's been talking about for a while.
That almost doesn't seem like enough though, a hundred and twenty five thousand a year to cover.
Well, there's a, there's a lot of maintenance to catch up to.
Yes.
That's true.
I do have one question about the interior of the pack. I mean, every time I go in there, it's dark because it's a concert. And it looks great to me. What exactly were the complaints about the interior, other than they were saying that the speaking, the sound system, but what else?
So, so the, the bigger, the bigger responses were our rigging system that we have backstage. Our lighting system and again, so two thousand and six was when the structure was built. You know, we're going to be coming up on, you know, it's eighteen, you know, seventeen, eighteen years. And those computerized systems and the mechanical equipment for them do start to break down, so that was a big one. For the interior, it, it's just like a refresh, it, it's never been repainted on the inside. So as you get up closer to the proscenium around the, the front of the stage. It's, it's pretty well dinged up, it's, it's, it's been used. You don't see a lot of it again when it's dark. Some of the upholstery on the seating, you know, we'll have to take a look at that and see about fixing that up as well, but.
Are they asking for new seating?
Not, not in whole, I, I, I believe the, the response was more of a. Maybe a section at a time, it doesn't have to be wholesale, we could, we could do some, we could do some targeted repairs on it.
Although it is old, it's not used every season.
Correct.
People in those seats are not in there every single day.
Right.
You know. But I think there are certain things you're right that are probably do need to be upgraded, lighting, sound system. So make it easier for the students to be able to control the sound when it's supposed to go on.
Right.
And not go on, so that's important.
When I think about athletic facilities, I know we've had a conversation here as a board, as well as as. We reach out to the community, we talk a little bit about the field house and it is interesting to have that conversation. And I, I know we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about fields, especially baseball and softball. But to continue to, to think about. Athletics, the field house and what, if anything, will do to the field house, we can give that some thought also.
A big comment that I've been hearing lately is you've seen converting the field house into locker facilities for. Those who are at the stadium, home and away locker facilities. And I don't know if the plan ever had both home and away or it was just away. And then home use the main locker room. How it was originally going to be set up, but I mean truly, you know, it's a matter of paying for the renovation of the building plus repairing it rough.
I don't think there was ever really a definitive plan as to what that building was supposed to be, other than calling, the calling in of a field house.
And one of the things we may want to think about is a, a survey you've put together and gotten out there, a number of very thoughtful surveys. And I've been doing my own survey with folks from, folks that are part of W DAB and to folks in the city and just to determine. You know, what, what might that be used for? And we had a pretty thoughtful conversation in finance. About it as well, that if we do decide to keep it. These are very, 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 very rough numbers, you know, the half a million dollars to fix a roof and then to put in. To put in locker facilities and restrooms and things along those lines and to make it really a suitable. Gym, you know, maybe an additional one and a half billion. And again, those are rough, pretty high numbers, but planning for those, again, what do we do?
Do we need an additional gym? And I mean, I think I'd like to have input too from our coaches and our athletic director as to their ideas.
And we have a, we have a good partnership with the city as well and sometimes folks in the city have a, at least some thoughts. What, what we may do with that, so potentially we could work on such a survey.
As, as it relates to the field house, it's been nine years. What it's really turned into is just a storage facility, you don't know where to put something.
They were using it for AP testing the other day.
Correct.
Well, that, that's, that's good, once a year use.
And one of, one of the conversations, of course, we had during finance was, you know, it's a, it's a very expensive storage facility. And can there be other areas that we could use for testing?
Yeah, that, that, not to take away from our, our.
Understood.
Our report as relates to finance. But in, in general, when we're looking at very large ticket numbers. We have to think about. What is the long term implications and, and I'll bring this up anyway. Hilliard is a good example. So if we were at Parkside and we're at our board meeting and we were at, we were said, well, it will cost about four hundred thousand to move us. Into their technology and everything, I'm guessing that's the number of four, five hundred thousand. So to get everything situated, move here, up and running and everything. Then that was good, I think when, when we discussed that. But I guess my question is, and, and I guess I will say part of it's my fault. But when we make decisions like that, we should be thinking, okay, next five years. This is an old building, so it's from fifty one. So if we're going to put four hundred thousand into a building to move the board office here, that's, that's one thing. But over the next five years, if we're going to have to put another million and a half or two million dollars into this building. That's a different story. You know, if we had that conversation when we said, yeah, go ahead and move down to Parkside or move from Parkside down to here, you know. But we're going to spend two and a half million dollars over the next, you know, five years. Because it's going to need a roof, it's going to be, you know, this, it's going to need that. That's just a whole different conversation versus four hundred thousand.
I want to continue the conversation, but do we have anything for Mr. Kosovar? I was going to say, would you like to sit down? Thank you very, very much.
No, I was, I was just going to say that. As relates to the field house is a good example too, you know. When it was separated, you know, we put money into it to firm up the building envelope of it and everything. Alright, and right now. There needs to be work done for the roof and put in some unisex or bathrooms or whatever. But again, still no definitive plan as to what we're going to do with that building. And that's over a hundred, over a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand to, to do, to do that project.
No air conditioning.
So yeah, the, the, I just want to point out, the hundred and thirty thousand, I think it is, is for the roof alone.
Yeah.
We don't have costs on putting in bathrooms or HVAC.
Right, so in the original. We already put money into it when. It was disconnected from the high school and I forget how much those funds were, do you remember?
I don't have those records, they've done it as part of the.
How much was? To shore up the building envelope after it was disconnected from the high school, how much money did we invest in the field house?
It was, it was in the range of around four or five hundred thousand, that was to do the brick facade. And, and some mechanical.
Right, so now. The board at that time said, well, we should probably keep this and. Call it, call it a field house. But that board never, never said, this is what it, what a field house means. It kind of goes back to, you know, what does the word excellence mean? So no board back then ever said this is what it should be, other than calling it a field house. That board never put away any money, that board never even said, how much is it going to cost to fix that? And we didn't make that decision until a few years after it was already done. The building was done in thirteen, the high school, and I don't think we did that building envelope project for at least till fifteen.
It was two thousand fourteen.
Okay, fourteen, so it was right af, right after I got on the board. So again, I'll take some responsibility, we. We put that money into it because we needed to, it was either that or tear it down. And there was no, no flavor to tear it down, considering the board had just said, no, we should save it. And do something with it. But since then, that four hundred thousand, we put, we put some more money into it since then, haven't we?
In hindsight, it would have been better.
Not. That was it, okay. So we put about four hundred thousand into it, a little more than that, to get it. We need to put another hundred and thirty into it, just to have a good roof. And that doesn't include anything inside of it, if by chance we want to do, which would include bathrooms, if we wanted to do partitions. Anything at all. Now you're talking. The one point three. Being conservative is, is my, my. My mentor, my mentor does here, so it could be another four hundred thousand.
Right.
So those are the things that. You know, I, I worry about that we invest in, in an idea without a clear definitive end to that idea. And again, when we moved from. When we moved from the old board office to Parkside, I think we all had a real good indication that that was going to be the place and that maybe we even buy the building back. From the city, if it made a lot of sense, but then we realized that, wow, we're going to spend a lot of money on this, on that building, we don't even own it. And to spend all that money plus buy the building, it just doesn't make sense, right? So we decided to move, which makes sense, it was, we didn't, it, it made good logical sense. And there were, there were a couple options, one was the field house. Or Hilliard, or one of the other elementary schools that we knew we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have, but we decided on Hilliard. So again, my, my. My concern and fear is that we're just going to keep putting money into things. And those are just my two examples, I'm sure there are other things. Without really knowing that, hey, this is what it's going to cost over the next five years. You know, if I buy a house, you know, and I'm going to pay a mortgage over fifteen years, I can, I know how much I'm going to spend over the next fifteen years. I don't have a five year forecast as to how much money is going to need to be put into this building for the next five years. You know, we do know, we do know it needs a roof, the boiler is old, it, it, it's not new in any, in any way. The parking lot is like the moon. You know, so I mean, there's just, and, and again, it's at most fifty people. For a building that was an elementary school. And, you know, and even if you had a hundred, hundreds, a hundred feet or a hundred, hundred feet square foot per. And you know, and even if you had a hundred, hundreds, a hundred feet or a hundred, hundred feet square foot per person, you're you're talking. You know, not a big building, you know, for fifty people.
Well, we have Link here though, too.
Well, Link is mostly the elementary school.
Okay.
Am I, am I, am I wrong about that?
We'll use the link. I'm sorry, Dr. Gagen.
Yeah, well, yeah, we use it for like in the summer.
In the summer? Is there a reason they're not using elementary?
There isn't it too.
They're using both.
Aren't you, they running out of here?
Yes, they, they come up here. Just we had, you know, it's
proximity to Quake Park, being able to go to the new playground, Peterson Pool, different things like that.
Right.
And in the fall, we had a cheerleading group or somebody that was using the gym there for some kind of practice.
Drama. We're also using it for middle school drama. It's being used. I I definitely hear your point in the field house. I still believe that moving to Hillier was the appropriate move. But even if we
Well, I'm sure we have any, I
Yeah, I I, yeah, it as opposed to turning around and building new construction and and you know, doing something like that, I think. And then then when you get into building new construction, you get into the situation like, you know, if we put it on Dover campus and drop it right on in in front of Lee Bernison, then it has to meet the what's the style, the architectural style that we have?
Oh, Western Reserve.
Western Reserve. And we got, you know, so now we gotta do all those kind of things. Um but I definitely hear what you're saying in regard to the field house and being
So that that conversation really based on uh Mr. Kosovo's presentation and permanent improvement and also facilities review. I know we also want to um talk about many things tonight. Um our committee reports, I know comments are going to involve a discussion with regard to baseball and softball, as well as the board comfortable moving ahead with committee reports.
Yeah, I do, I do see your point, and I think it's very valid.
Yeah.
Uh and and we, the previous boards, um the problem, it would have probably been best to just demolish the field house at the time that we wouldn't have this discussion now, but I it it nobody had the foresight to.
Yeah, and I'll just say one thing and then we'll move on.
Sure.
What ends up happening is when you start to invest in something, you're afraid of losing that investment by cutting bait. Versus just throwing good money after bad. And that's, you know, that's my concern. You know, we're responsible for the district's money, how it's spent, throwing good money after bad. Um it's just not good.
You don't need a money pit.
These and your comments in the finance meeting, I thought they were very thoughtful. Um and you brought up some of the things that you're bringing up tonight. And I I think as a board doing the right thing, uh I think we need to have those conversations. So thank you. Anything else on permanent improvement and facilities review? Mr. Kosovo, thank you very, very much. That was very, very helpful. Uh moving on to committee reports legislatively.
Um there is a bill to kind of keep your eyes on right now, which is House Bill five eighty three. Um and that would extend the temporary flexibility regarding substitute teachers until June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Sounds like that is going to be passing. There are a couple of different advocacy events going on this next week. One is um about the Ohio private school voucher lawsuit tomorrow night, and that's virtual. I'm hoping I actually, I'm hoping I can maybe get a recording of it because I cannot attend the meeting live. If anybody's interested, let me know and I'll send you the link on that one. Um and then on Saturday in Bay Village, there's a advocacy postcard regarding fair school funding. But it's also gonna have Dr. Collins, who's on the State Board of Education and a couple of other people at it, um just sort of answering some questions and talking about what's going on regarding school funding and whatnot. So just a few things to
Thank you, thank you. Uh student, any questions on legislative or less? Okay. Uh student achievements. Um we of course have graduation coming up, so I wanted to bring up, if anyone needs a ride, do commencement, say the word, I'm happy to uh carpool. Uh tomorrow, West Shore Career and Technical. Uh which reminder, they serve over seventeen hundred high school students across Bay Village, Lakewood, Rocket River and Westlake. School districts provides relevant, real world academic and technical experience preparing our students for their education, professional programs, and also employment. Uh the career passport or graduation is tomorrow. I know Dr. Gagen and Ms. Pernat will be attending. Uh but congratulations to all of our graduates there. Um I did want to mention um that uh Best Buddies, Best Buddies is a nonprofit. We chat about Best Buddies from time to time. It's the world's largest organization dedicated to ending the social, physical and economic isolation of the two hundred million people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And our local chapter at the high school, which is led by Tabitha Divine and Rebecca Satchek, they participated in the Strike It Big event. It's a social fundraising event for milestones, autism resources, and they raise funds and awareness as well as getting together to have a lot of fun.
So did Best Buddies replace Circle of Friends?
It did.
Okay, so, okay.
And not only did it replace it, but it grew and is really quite a large organization. And they are active. Uh policy committee. Okay, finance, Mr. Fanuk, anything you'd like to add?
Um well, besides a lot of um the PI items that Mr. Prost recovered.
Yeah.
Uh this Hopkins is cool where the uh preliminary five year forecast, um that is due at the end of this month and and potential year end forecast for this fiscal year, but still working on it, still trying to uh, you know, make sure it's as accurate as possible before he does present it to us at the end of May, um to have a much clearer idea of how the year will end going into the next couple of years. You know.
Correct.
Um and then obviously, we talked a fair amount of of about the PI items. Uh the one thing I guess we did not talk about um five minutes ago was uh our discussion on the baseball softball
Sure.
uh associated with it. So
Do you want, do you want to have that conversation now?
Yeah.
We can. And that it was part of finance. We spent some time talking about it. So as I um uh as I summarize the uh baseball and softball uh fields, uh we of course uh wanted to have a playing situation that is best for now, for this year. And uh really, the district working hard to make certain that we have acceptable playing fields for this year. I know that the district has been working on a long term permanent solution. Uh thank you to all of those that are involved with baseball and softball. Uh you've reached out to us. We've heard you. And uh and we're working really hard on a solution. And what I have shared with uh uh folks like Mrs. Protus, uh Mr. D'Angelo. Uh uh and and they reach out to the community. Um also, Mrs. Forshi, who's involved with softball. Uh we've shared with them uh what we're working on, and that is a long term solution and hypothetically, a long term solution uh which would engage the city as well, because it it is quite a, quite a project that we're looking at. Um that it would involve an excellent uh solution uh to a baseball field as well as a softball field. It would involve turf. It would involve um dugouts and fencing and storage and and lots of those things. And we've even gone out and we've seen pricing on some of these things as well. And when you have that conversation, inevitably you have the conversation, well, gee, you know, so is it, is it gonna be ready for next season? And really, the plan that we've discussed and and during finance is really quite a, quite a project. And um uh at least uh our our initial review is it would not be ready for next year. Um so next year, the idea would be that uh hiring an architect for a grand strategic plan for baseball and softball uh might put those fields out of reach and out of play for next year. So those um home fields would be on a uh field outside of the district, more than likely. Uh that is, uh those would be good fields. They'd be home fields. Uh potentially, uh there could be some use of the fields, but we would have a, say, a tri C or a crusher style permanent field for baseball, similar situation for softball. As long as we have this plan in place, it would move forward for a permanent excellent solution for uh twenty twenty four. And sharing it with those folks that we've reached out to, that are also reaching out to their baseball and softball uh communities. Um they like that idea. They like that idea. They've shared that with us that they like that idea. So the thought is, um I would like to charge our superintendent and our treasurer with a uh pursuing a long term solution for baseball field and softball field. And also that would include um conversations with the city of Wesley. Um and as we walk forward, continuing to move forward um that we will pursue this plan and also pursuing um fields, temporary good fields set uh outside of the district for both a baseball and for softball. Um any questions on that?
For just next year, for the twenty
Twenty three season.
So we're looking at having this plan finished, completion for the twenty four.
That is correct.
Season, okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, other question that I have in that that was my first question was the timing. So we're really talking, you know, when you say long term, you think five, ten years out. We're really talking two years out. Um my other question is, you know, we are talking about renting fields for baseball and softball, but we also, you know, we need to think beyond just varsity, JV freshman, and then L B M S softball, because um as I have learned this over the last few months, it kind of rolls downhill. Priority always goes to the varsity, but then you end up having JV and freshmen not being able to play. And we definitely need to be able to get them um as play, as much playing time as possible to help build the program.
And that that would be the goal, to make certain that there are playing fields for
Thank you. How would their practice sessions be affected by this? They still be able to practice on earth?
We believe, we don't, you know, we get, we we have to, there's, there's specific questions to a general. I mean, we have, we don't know who's gonna be involved um in regard to partnership or anything like that. So
But as 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 a board, what we want to do, I believe, and and I'll ask the board, is uh does anyone on the board object to charging uh the superintendent and the treasurer with the solutions that I mentioned, a good, permanent, long term solution for baseball and softball? Um adequate uh good fields for next season if their play is interrupted. And that that solution and hypothetically, you know, what if, what if uh the superintendent and the treasurer come up with a plan that next season um is doable and done, uh so be it. Uh but we're uh we want to plan for uh that excellent solution and make certain that all players have a place to play next year. And like that or anything else that you would have?
I I like the plan. I think it's good to move forward in that direction.
Super.
I just wanna emphasize that I do want to think that we should uh have it done correctly. Uh as far as with the pitch of those baseball fields and, you know, a level, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right.
Right. And I know that's what the superintendent and treasurer would be searching for.
Yeah, I I will say that what you're charging them to do is not necessarily a plan. You're you're charging them to create a plan um and come back to us with options and ideas and stuff like that. So I guess for this board needs to decide as to what kind of timetable do we want those things done on?
Sure.
As Ms. Burnett said, you know, it's not a five, ten year forecast plan, you know, is what's the board's comfort level? Do we want to do everything we can to have this completed by the twenty three baseball softball season? Or are we good with, you know, say, doing it right, taking a little extra time and having it done for the following season? Um some of the conversations that we've had in finance and ad hoc, I think there's, there's a good opportunity to do it right. And right is, you know, not just slapping down infield
Right.
turf and getting what you get.
So could we have that for the twenty three season, or is that impossible to have it done right?
Highly unlikely.
Okay.
Yeah, you would have to pull the trigger.
So to be realistic, we're looking at twenty twenty four then.
Yeah, the 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 hope this hope is is a good word. The hope is that we will be able to get some uh cooperation and collaboration with the city on a particular project. You know, because we both have the same needs. But at the same time um you know, they they still don't know when they're gonna tear down Parkside. Um which is going to be, you know, part of their whole additional plans for fields and stuff like that. And no fault to the city. They're very diligent and very conservative with their money and the way they spend it. But as a result of that, it's, it delays and delays and delays and delays, you know, bond passed years ago for fields and all of that. Really, the only thing that's happened is you know, the ones over at the Playhouse, field wise, so.
Uh those are nice.
They they are. They're 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 great for ten year olds and under.
Right, right. It's a really nice facility.
Yeah.
And that's a great question that Mrs. Lizinski was asking. And um when you have those thoughtful conversations about potential partnerships, um the pitch, uh the rights uh uh type of field and bringing folks in really to do it right, to have those conversations.
Hopefully even sponsorships.
Sponsorships.
That's another thing that gives us
Absolutely.
With Nick Renalo coming in, I think he's really good.
Right.
But again, we can't wait on the city to to make a decision as to whether or not they're gonna hold our hand and go forward. If they want to, great, but we need to walk down our own path.
Right.
And if they want to walk with us and hold hands, then we will.
And the the outcome could be different. I mean, if we we can have one path, we go if there's a partnership, and then another path, we go if there's not a partnership. But I think the point is to to choose that and be able to put it out there.
Right.
I don't want to say quickly, but what I in a
To give it the time it deserves.
Well, and and that's, and that's, that's the I guess that's the the discussion point we need to make as a board. Um you know, we can give all the direction as to for Mr. Hopkins and and Dr. Agan to go develop something and bring it back to us. But they're busy guys.
Well, and I I think
They're busy guys. I mean, and this is, this is, this is not necessarily
Well, this is a priority. And this, and and this is good, and and the timing of this is good as well, because as you heard, our directors are working hard on a lot of things, and and this aligns up with the Dave Kosfar's doing. So we're okay taking it on. We we know it's um a priority not only to this board, but to this community and um you know, we're we're anxious to take it on.
So I would say then what this board needs to think about are a couple of things. One, what kind of timetable do you want for, say, the first step? And I'm not even sure what that first step is. That first step may be getting proposals from um design consultants. I I don't know. Um but I'm sure the brains in this room do. Um so but that, that's, that's step one. You gotta have a plan. And we have to decide when do we want that plan by? Once we have that plan, then we can, we can identify, when do we want to put this plan in action? How quickly can we put it in action? I would, I would like to think that the board is uh is comfortable with trying to move this as long as as quickly as possible, but at the same time uh with quality. Um and after, again, conversations we've had the conversations we've had and not to be, not to be flippant, but just putting turf down on the infield and just doing really nothing else leaves you with
Problems in the future for future boards, right?
Right.
But potentially, um I'll be here though.
And then nobody complaining about this board.
No, they won't. I'll still be there. Um but no, there there are things at both of them. You know, the dugout is a good example, you know, the the seating, the You know, the, the seating, the press boxes. I think actually the, the press box was built by former, former baseball parents. I mean, so in the days when you could do those things, you know, way long ago. So I guess what I'm trying to comment here is that there are a lot of things, additional things that could make this a, a premier facility with the, with the understanding that we're going to be as, as mindful of the money we're going to say. We're going to, I think, I, I think I'll get this right from a previous board. We're not going to build a Cadillac, but we're going to build a really nice Chevy. And be proud of that. And it's going to come with everything that we need. And that could be dugouts, storage, and whatnot. So those are the things that I think give us the ability to say, all right, we're going to move forward, but we're going to do it on a timetable that makes sense. See if we can cooperate with others and go forward. But we do need to give direction as to when do we want something back in the way of, hey, where are we at?
Dr. Gagen and Mr. Hopkins, I guess first of all, is the, is the direction? Does it make sense to you and the fact that we like quality quickly? And we want something that we can be proud of.
Direction makes a lot of sense. And, and like I said, there's the, the scope of what we can do, like all at once. If, if we have partnerships and sponsorships, we can do a whole lot more quickly, you know. The, the ideal thing would be able to do turf and press boxes and stands and dugouts all at one time. And if you have those partners aligned, it makes it a lot easier to do. But part of the plan could be, we're going to do this, and then this, and then this, and try and build it out through the, the time. And as far as a, a timeline in, in regard to step one, I mean, as far as like getting a.
From what I'm hearing from the board is, I think that the way I would interpret that is step one for us is to go out. And we've already started doing this. Mr. Kosovar has reached out to the two premier sports architects in the area. Are Benke and O-Sports or Osborne. So those are the two main sports architects in the area. We've reached out to both. We can review those proposals and bring something back to the board in the next few weeks. And it sounds like what the board is looking for is that master plan.
Correct.
What it could look like if we move down. Now, the board may come back and say, no, we don't like that, or no, the partnership's not working out. We want to go in a more specific manner where we're just going to do X, Y, or Z. But it sounds like the board would like to see that, what could we do? And what would be a premier facility that it may require a partnership? But what could we do with the land that we have? And that would be master planning with one of the, the two companies, and we have proposals already. So we can reach out to both companies, we can ask them to come in, go over their scope, make sure we're on the same page, and make sure the pricing would hold firm, and then we can bring a contract to the board to move forward with that master plan. Also get timelines from them on how long it would be to come up with that master plan and that they can present it to the board.
Excellent.
So the master plan, so even if it, it involved changing the softball field, say, where it is now, to another location. I, I mean, if you had to even move some of the fields around, what's the ideal situation for the land that we have?
Correct.
They could come up with.
Yes, you know, they're going to look at, you know, pieces of, you know. If, if you were to do a, a large-scale project, entrance is something to talk about. Okay, you know, where, how do people get to it? Is it, is it, does it have a prominent entrance? Right now, our softball field, I complain about our softball field is, nobody knows where it's at. You know, it's kind of hidden way, way, way back. And so they're going to go through, what does the entrance look like? What is the, where would fields lay out best? How could we best utilize the land that we have? And that's all part of that master plan.
Yes, we also, as, as other boards were building the high school, they, they wrestled with the same thing as we did with elementary school. There's only, only so much money.
True.
So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that this board doesn't want to spend four to five million dollars on doing a whole giant, you know, changeover of redevelopment of the land from softball all the way over to the fieldhouse, which that is all land that could be prime to be redeveloped into awesome fields. I mean, if there's a softball field there today, another softball field and a baseball field. There's, there's definitely enough room there for, for that stuff. Question is, is how much do we want to spend?
Sure.
You know, and, and although I know we can do things in phases, you start to get into the putting, putting too much money maybe into something that we should not be putting too much money into. You know, so I, I just, I, I guess my, my, my advice would be is to come back to us with ideas that are such that, yeah, this would be great. You know, with, if you get a Cadillac for the price of a Yugo. But if you go.
You have to define that for, for those that are tuning in.
The next generation, no one knows.
So different, different plans.
Yeah, yes, yes. You know, because again, I, I think, again, I, I think at this point, if we can come together with a good solid plan.
Okay.
And if we did, you know, at different levels.
Got it.
So for the board, as well as those that are tuning in, and as Mr. Hopkins has mentioned, we have seen some proposals. We needed an idea of where we were going. But the superintendent and the treasurer are going to get much more specific with our goals within the price range that we want.
And we should be able to bring something actionable for the next board meeting, to be able to turn to, we won't have the plan, obviously. But be able to commit to an organization to, to have more to develop with us.
I think too, something I heard from the community, just the fields that potentially players will play on next year, some idea where those will be, and we've chatted about that during some of our finance meetings as well. But anything more on baseball and softball?
Well, I would reiterate what you just said, Mr. Kraft, is that if, if we do go forward with this, that dedicated fields are, are secured as early as possible, even though I know they don't know their schedules probably.
Right.
Till October, till Nick comes in and he starts working with his peers. But to at least get on the list of either tri-C crushers or what have you, and to make sure that we're going to be able to get the kids there.
Yep.
Busing and, and such.
Is Baldwin Wallace?
I, I know Dr. Gagen and Mr. Hopkins will be looking at that.
Yeah, all options.
I'm going to move on to curriculum committee.
No, not since our last field trip to West Shore. Speaking of West Shore, though, I have a project for their construction. Dugouts at the baseball.
Oh, I thought you were going to say fieldhouse.
They, they have quite a construction.
They do.
Program there, so.
I'm going to move on to community outreach. Anything the board would like to share with regard to their reach to the community?
Mr. Kraft and I had a wonderful opportunity of going through the buildings or even greeting staff as they were coming in on Monday and Tuesday for staff appreciation. Week last week, and that was fantastic, being able to see so many of our staff members out and about and just hearing all the wonderful things they were saying about the district. And Saturday was Music Gala Mode, which was always a fun event to go and hear all of the different music organizations across Wesleyd Schools. And even got a chance to pop over and see the last fifteen minutes or so of the lacrosse, the girls' lacrosse game. And so I think they, they ended up winning twelve to five. So we've had quite a season.
Sometimes it's not the board that reaches out to the community, sometimes that will be our students. And I have a letter from the Westlake Town Criers, Mr. Al Sodha, chairman of the Westlake Easter Egg Hunt, if I may. On behalf of the Westlake Town Criers, I would like to commend the Westlake High School National Honor Society for their community service in assisting us in conducting the 2022 City of Westlake Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, April the ninth. The National Honor Society students showed up with spirit and an unbridled willingness to cooperate. They handled the refreshment stand, helped the toddlers in the under-three age group, did face painting, and even appeared in costume as Easter bunnies in the town crier. You have every right to be proud of this group. Their enthusiasm and friendliness is a brilliant reflection of the youth of this community and of Westlake High School. Thanks also to Dr. Gagen for allowing our flyer to be distributed to the elementary school and allowing us to post signs announcing the event. I look forward to working again next year with the Westlake Schools and the National Honor Society at the 2023 Easter Egg Hunt. Sincerely yours, Al Sodha. Any other community outreach that anyone would like to touch on? I'm going to move to board comments. Any additional comments?
So do a jury at seven forty-one PM, Pernat?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.